But it's not.
Well, it is this morning. I mean, the traffic is my hand. Stay down. It's a little better. It's not good.
Mayor, it's 5:30.
Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. This is the work session for Belavista City Council for November 17, 2025. First item is review of the minutes. We have two different minutes, October 27, 2025, and November 12, 2025, which was a special meeting. Is there any comment from anybody? Okay, you can look at those again until next week. Next thing, unfinished business is establishing a business license requirement for qualifying businesses operating within the city, providing for classes and exemptions, requiring annual renewal, establishing fees, providing penalties for violations and for other purposes. And this is the third reading and was tabled. And I believe, Jason, that this has the amendments in that people agreed to last week.
Yes, we submit, we included the amendments that were adopted at the last meeting on second reading. And so this, as presented in the package, should be the latest and greatest for your third reading.
Okay. Taylor, I wondered if you could give a brief presentation about it? I know you guys have heard from staff before about this.
I have not much to add based on what we've talked to before. But essentially, this would be a streamlining effort for businesses that are currently existing in Belavista and those that are coming to Belavista or those that are existing and move within Belavista. Currently, I know the council and the sub-vests that they should know the process as it is right now. Because they have to come to zoning, they have to do zoning compliance. Preferably, they've done that before they've invested in the property or the real estate agents done that. They've made sure that the use is compliant, that the use, if it's more intense, is still allowed. There are certain development triggers that are required if you're increasing guests or suites or offices, things of that nature. All of that needs done during the due compliance before you open the business. And then, of course, I want to speak for Steve, but then fire has requirements as well for their occupancy that they are supposed to be getting for their business. And so this essentially streamlines that with the other cities that are doing it right now. Like Rogers has a really great webpage that lines out the check marks and what they do. It gives them something tangible to come and get to that triggers, basically, the requirements that are already here. So essentially, that's what staff is just looking for, is a streamlined process for staff and the applicants and the business owners. That's all I have from my side specifically, zoning compliance, because zoning compliance on the back end is very difficult after the applicant has already invested in a property, moved in a property, they open, they open their doors, they have guests coming. The sign goes up, and that's typically whenever we're planning or development compliance notices that there's a new business here that's not been authorized, it's not been through the process. And that is, it's not a fun process for us or the applicant. Tell them that they can't be open, they have to close their doors, cease and desist, whatever it be. It's a zoning code violation, which is a daily infraction. We try to avoid those situations. We want everything to be done upfront. We don't want to be the note-sayer that comes in after it's already been established. And that only prolongs the period of compliance essentially, just by an amount that's not needed. So we would like to avoid that situation as much as the property owner or business owners. And that's all I've got for you.
Larry?
I guess my question would be, is how many, how many situations have we experienced that created a problem? And was the problem self-induced, meaning that the owner did not do due diligence? As an example, if you're a homeowner, you think, well, what can I do on my property? And so you check on things if you're buying. If you're looking at living in a property and then doing some expansion, you obviously think about the POA, the ACC, and the city, because we have different layers in there that affect us. And so it would seem to me that it would be intuitive, if I were a business owner, to have that basic fundamental savvy, if you will. And so how many instances have we experienced that precipitated the drive to propose this, this business or licensing ordinance?
I can't give you an exact number. I'm standing here before you right now, being asked out on the spot. But essentially, this year and end of last year, the, I'm not sure if it's the driving factor, but of course, you know, we had a shopping center that has been turned into something else that had multiple businesses within it that now have to find somewhere else to go. And so there's been a recent uptick as of now, because one of our larger entities that owned several businesses is now demoed and is now becoming a parking lot and outdoor recreation facility. So I think it's just, as of recent, brought in light of light, I have an unrelated situation that comes to mind right now. It's not related to that specifically, is we had a business owner that wanted to expand, produce a location for his business on the west side. He was already established on the east side, but he's outrunning. And so he's a legal non-comformity right now on the east side. So he hasn't been through the zoning and occupancy and fire requirements before, because he's just existed long before the city's existed. And so he just did what he did on the west side, didn't call, didn't ask, didn't check the zoning, started moving in material, operating his business, and we had to come in and tell him we had to stop doing that. The zone did not allow for it at all. It required a re-zone. We educated him on what that process was coming before you guys, asking for the zone, and he chose not to seek that route. So I'm not sure what he's doing right now for his business expansion, since we've had that conversation. But there are several, there's several instances as of late, but I can't give you an exact number right now.
What will be the real benefit to the businesses with the licensing program? What do they get out of this? What is the, what is the advantage to them to have a business licensing in Belavista?
I can, I can answer that. I, I think the businesses themselves don't get much of anything. But the city, right now, there's, there are business activities, the city has no idea what's going on. You don't know what's going on in your city. So the benefit is that the city knows what's going on in the city. That's the benefit. It can really, nor that it gives a driver anything to have to get a driver's license. You can drive just as fine without it, but the government has to know who's on the road to know who's responsible for what's going on if something happens and that there's some degree of compliance. It's the same concept. The business license is not intended to provide any service. I mean, it, it just, it wouldn't. Now, in terms of market knowledge, potentially, they would be able to contact us and, and they'll have, you know, what's registered here. That, I guess, perhaps that's some slight benefit, is just knowledge on the path behalf of everyone, not just the city government. But I don't know that you could really say that there's a hard benefit in terms of, you know, business X, having to get a license, when do they get out of it, sort of a thing.
Because you can go on this, on the Belavista Business Association website and find the information about all of this.
That's been on every email.
Yeah, registered there, so.
I did notice in the comparison sheet that Taylor prepared for us that every first-class city in this whole area has a business license except us. In a first-class city, in this 2,500 people or more. So the only places that don't have it are very small places.
I would just hope that it also streamlined what's currently happening. Just as a business owner, like a developer or applicant, the more streamlined things can be in Belavista, the better, in my opinion, because it's already the need. They don't just have to worry about us, they also have to worry about the developer. If there's a land use plot restriction that prohibits their business, that's an additional layer here that they have to be aware of. So just saying, anything that's safety on their side to streamline things and make things a little more understandable or tangible with an appetite, that's typically a plus. Sorry.
Mayor. Oh, Travis. Whenever I think of streamline, I think of faster, more efficient, reduce time, reduce steps, duplication with others, those sort of things. How does adding an ordinance and a fee make this streamlined compared to what it is now?
It creates a process that's streamlined, because right now, there isn't one. It's essentially staff is making sure, or trying to make sure on the back end, pulling the back, closing them down, whatever it is, going through the actual process, which may require a re-zone, that could be six months long. Again, all that on the back end is what's happening. Whenever this, if there was an ordinance that was a requirement, when they call us and say, I had an email yesterday that said, is a business license to be required in your city? And I said, no, but you still need to make sure that all the zoning and land use requirements are met and that your fire arguments are met. I don't hear back from them. So if I say yes, and here's the steps, and here are the processes that the city's established, it's just, it establishes that and gives it like an actual tangible set of steps for them to follow.
My other thing about this, Jason mentioned it, that, you know, a potential business could look at and see what we have. But whenever we tried to do that research on cities who already have a business license, they weren't able to readily produce that information to us. And I didn't realize that that wasn't shared with the rest of the council. But maybe you could just attest to that, that that, it doesn't make the business information readily available.
Which is interesting. Yeah, that, the one that you asked me to prepare afterwards, after the fee schedule was shared, some of them, I did not have an exact number, because when we called them up, and I can't speak to this, and I actually find it interesting, because how our permitting system works, I would be able to give you an exact number.
Yes.
Like, if you called me today and we had an ordinance, I'd be able to tell you whatever way you guys ended up setting the exact amount I had at that very minute.
Yeah, I've done that before.
Within seconds. Like, I, I can't understand why they couldn't. They were just giving me approximations, and I, I don't know why.
Wendy?
Thank you. How would we notify existing businesses that this would be a requirement so they could be prepared and be compliant?
Well, we would work with the communication director, who's also back there. I assume we do social media pushes, we would do, whether we partner with the POA, do water bill notifications, email notifications, newsletter notifications, whatever it be. But just like any of our other requirements, there would be a heads-up that wouldn't just be like, surprise. There would be heavily public engagement, of which you would agree with me, yeah.
With the renewal process, would the, that be on them or would it, or weeks, never mind, or that is for renewal?
It's just like developments on the developers, the same thing with the short-term rental owners. Whenever short-term rental permits, it's on the business owner or the person who's acting or developing. So technically, it is their responsibility to make sure their licenses, just like with the state that they require. They need to be doing that as part of this business owner. However, staff has time or the capacity, like a short-term rental ones. We try to send a reminder, hey, it's going to expire, or if it expired and you haven't submitted anything yet. So that way, they have a window of timeframe to get that, to avoid the relapse and the bigger fee and whatnot. But technically, it falls on the, the hands of the owner.
So what increase that staff needs or you have to process the business licensing to manage that program?
As of right now, with how we're operating, I can't say I knew all the staff member or I can't speak for Steve, TAP, news, fire inspectors, because right now, we're kind of doing it, it's just, it's just messy. We just want to streamline the process with this. If our compliance is already doing it on the back end, it goes on the front end, and a planner is dealing with it, maybe it'd be quicker and faster than how we're doing it right now. So I can't, I can't give you an exact manpower or out那儿 that we would need for this. But I can expect anything as of upfront that we would need.
Wendy?
Sorry, one last question. For entities that have more than one location, like the POA has several locations, would they get one license, or would they get one for each individual location?
So the, the ordinance itself says that for each business premises, so for each location.
Craig?
I guess to me, I see this as preventative. I don't, I don't know why we keep looking at what the benefits of the business owner is. We are the business of the city. So the benefit to us is knowing what's going on in our community. I think, I don't think you could find many new business owners or many business owners that would know anything about zoning. I mean, we see it every week, every month. People are confused. Taylor probably has a lit of questions daily about, well, why can't I do this or that? It, it's not just a known thing. I mean, this, the whole planning of cities and communities, it is not intuitive. I mean, it's, it is a process. And anything that can streamline that process or get it to where it's a benefit to us and a benefit to planning, you know, and as far as fees, I mean, we established fees and all that kind of stuff. I mean, I'm not even considering that. It costs, you know, that's just the way it is. But, you know, as far as establishing a business license for our community, to where people actually know, you know, we have something on our agenda right now, where if it was not a re-zone, you know, somebody just tried to come in and, and open up the business just out of the blue, I mean, what's the difference? So we're, we're sitting here talking about rezoning for somebody to come in and do something, or they can just go and just do it. And then, and they just, you know, ask for forgiveness later. And that's, and that's the premise that we're running on as a community right now. So I, I struggle with that.
But we could have that process set up anyway to help businesses when they come in. That process would be.
This is exactly what Taylor told me.
We don't need the business.
Well, what is Taylor not offering by offering? What, what she just said, how does that, how does that differ, differ from what you're asking?
I'm only suggesting that we could have the process organized administratively without having a business license requirement.
What is, what is the, what is the hang-up with business like? It's like a dirty word. I don't understand.
I don't want, I, from a business standpoint, I don't know what they're getting out of this.
I couldn't, I couldn't tell you how many businesses I've walked into that didn't have a business license hanging behind a register or hanging by the door. I've never thought about it. I've never cared about it. But that's part of the process. It just, that, that's the way cities operate.
Okay, thanks, both of you, for your input. I think everybody's had their questions answered now, and so we can consider this next Monday. The next amendment says ordinance amended in Belavista's only ordinance and map to rezone property described in building position number 2025-59940, twenty first of number sixteen, dash four three two six nine, S zero 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 from R V Residential Estate District to C two local commercial. This is on second reading, and if I'm not mistaken, Jack P O would like to speak to us briefly. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, it's on.
It's on?
Do you want your presentation?
Yeah, that'd be great. Thanks, Wanda.
Hi, Mayor and council members. Thank you guys so much for the opportunity to come and speak with you again. I just wanted to share some updates from the last meeting that we had last month and what I've been able to learn and have taken your feedback and done some further due diligence on the particular property. Taylor and I have been able to meet a couple times since our last meeting to discuss the property. And then I've been able to have meetings with, with Runway Group, the developer, with Ethan, the director, with Charlie, the head of POA Water, with the head of Centerton Utilities and ADH, Sherry from ADH, basically to talk through all the components of a commercial development on this property. And we made some really good headway, specifically on utilities. I'll get into that. So if you want to go forward, Wanda, a couple more.
We really need to, the city clerk doesn't need to be making your presentation for you. I want to, we're, we're going to do that, but.
Oh, is there a clicker or something that I can use?
I, I don't know, but, but really, this is a work session. So it'd be best if you had detailed information like this to give it when we're on the minutes and on the record. Certainly, you can talk about whatever you want, but I'm, I'm just concerned that our city clerk is, is, is your secretary today, and she's not. She's, she's here to do something else. And so we just need to be careful about that. I mean, you're certainly free to manipulate the computer and all that stuff if you want. But we can't burden the city clerk with your needs, is what I'm saying. Okay? So, but, you know, Wanda, if you're willing to go ahead and to do it, I'm not, I'm certainly not going to stop you. But we normally put our official information up here, and we've taken it all down and all that, so.
I understand. Thank you, Jason. So the first, kind of one of the solutions that we figured out is water, because water was one of the main issues that was brought up last time. We, I spoke with Centerton Utilities, and there is a water line on the street, on the same side of the street. They would just require an easement coming across one neighbor. So they're open to doing that if we get the easement. But then, after discussions with Taylor, we decided to, I decided to further pursue the possibility of coming into the POA. And so I spoke with ACC, and they told me to get in contact with Ethan, who's the director of Runway Group, the developer. Ethan then had me communicate with Charlie, who's the head of POA Water. And Charlie said, yes, we can service it. I see no problems with that. And it, that's what it says really small in this email. And he said to, that he would just need to get an agreement with Centerton Utilities. He reached out to them. They said, yes, we're agreeable to give you this agreement. And so I have told them, yes, let's go ahead. I just have to, the developer has to cover the fees for coming into POA, and then we have water on the street, which is really good, because that helps us with all of the, like, sprinklers, having water pressure, all the safety code requirements for a commercial property. And then we were able to, on septic, I was able to communicate with Sherry, who works at the Artside Department of Health, and she confirmed with me that a septic tank will work for a coffee shop. We then hired a state-designated contractor.
I need to, I gotta stop you here, because as we've talked about several times, I know the council's heard of, rezoning is not based on your particular use. It is based on all potential uses within the zone.
Right.
You keep bringing up what you want to build.
Okay.
It could be anything that's allowed in the zone that you've requested.
Yes.
And you could, in fact, sell the property after you get it zoned, and somebody else could build something else.
Right.
So I just want to, just remind the council and remind you.
Yes.
We're not saying this with a wink and a nod. Yeah, I know, but we're putting our coffee shop in. Do, stop doing that.
Yeah.
So we just, just try to talk in general, please.
I understand.
So I'm trying to help you and the council.
Yeah, thank you, Jason. But it would work, sorry, for a commercial development on this property. And we just got the results back today from, we went with Corbett Environmental Consulting and hired them to do a soil test on the property. From our initial, I had this conversation an hour ago with Rebecca Corbett. They do a lot of soil testing in Belavista. And from her, from this phone conversation an hour ago, she said, yes, I think it would work for a small commercial development on the property. And so what, after the feedback from last time, I had originally proposed a C two designation. The reason I had proposed that was because directly across the street, the Village Center, where the ACC is in Belavista, is C two. And in general, in development, it's recommended to, if it's adjacent to another commercial property, to go for the same designation. After the conversation last time, it was brought to my attention that this might not be so favorable to neighbors. I've had conversations with two of the neighbors about their concerns surrounding development next door. And, and, and those conversations went, went well. And so what I'm proposing is to change from C two to a C one designation. In the new code, C one, the purpose of it, it says that it's for transitional commercial between higher-intensity commercial and residential. And so I think it would fit perfectly in this location, because directly across the street, you have C two, the shopping center, and then on the neighboring sides, you have residential estate. And so this C one designation is intended for these exact purposes. And so having figured out the utilities, being water and then septic, and then discussing with neighbors, I wanted to present all this information to you and propose that it's shifted to a C one from a C two rezon designation.
Shay?
So my question is to Jason, if we're going to change kind of the, the initial application, would it still be our, but then it would go back?
No, it's, it's up to you. You can, you have the ultimate, they're public areas, if they conduct it. And it's up to you, the council will determine what the appropriate zone is. So if, right now, it says C two, the council could do, the city, the council could do any zone if it deemed appropriate. So no, it would not have to go back to the planning commission. One, one option the council does have, and I'm not trying to, I just want to, then come up often, just want to make sure you know all your options, is that you can actually send something back to the planning commission for further review. And so you do have that option. I don't know that we've really ever done that, but that's there should you desire.
Travis?
Hey, Jack, thanks for putting in a lot of effort and legwork here. I think our staff attorney was a little bit hard on me. I'm not sure how you're supposed to do the slides if you don't have a clicker. But I do agree with him when he says, you keep mentioning coffee shop, because in our conversations, you said you weren't willing to do a PCD, and that would, you would make a plan for the actual thing you wanted to do. And I, and I told you that it was my belief that the council would have supported that more than this, although I don't know how they're going to vote. I only have a good guess from working with them for the last year. So that was a little disheartening for me. I think this is better than what we had last time. But I also want to let you and the council know that unless I was ill-informed, the planning commission told me that with the new zoning, you would be allowed to go back to them without reapplying and waiting however many days it is. Is that correct?
What, sorry, I know it's recording. You're talking to the microphone here.
Yes, I think with the, he would, he would be allowed to go back to the planning commission without waiting the time. Thanks.
I don't really have a time waiver. Aiden?
But there's a time limit, so.
Only maybe a few.
Then three hundred and sixty-five days. So, yeah, if, if he didn't appeal it, he did. He, he did the appeal process instead of waiting three hundred and sixty-five days to resubmit. Um, yeah, there's a new, new code, new zoning map. Um, so if you guys in the, you know, voting no on the third reading and whatnot, um, he could resubmit an application to the planning commission and go through the whole thing again, um, because there's now the ordinance, new map.
Uh, and then while you're up there, if you don't mind, Taylor, would, would staff support a C two zoning in this?
Staff does not support C two.
Or, uh.
C one.
C one, that, the new one he's trying to apply for.
Um, well, that's, I just want to clarify too. So Zach, uh, Jack, um, he can't change the request right now. Only you guys can change requests. So one of you will have to vote to amend to C one. So we're still talking about C two right now. But should you guys vote or someone recommend or propose an amendment to this ordinance to not get down to C one, um, there are, I'm just hoping if you do that, that you go through the table of uses and you look at all of the ones with the P next to it. Um, and just, that's what we pictured and envisioned there. I will say C one is more aligned with the future land use plan. It is within, uh, a type two node. Um, it's right on the outskirts of it, so that's why we couldn't recommend C two because C two and the higher uses are supposed to be around the intersection of three forty and two seventy-nine. Uh, but C one would still meet the, the future land use intent, um, right here, so.
Is there a more appropriate one for that area?
Based on the new uses, CR wouldn't really meet the intent because CR is really intended for large pieces of land that have, um, you know, like the, the golf courses, the marinas, um, things like that that require a lot of landscape. Um, this area, this is a small lot. It's a, it's a one and a half acre. Um, it's not what we typically envision as the perfect CR zone. Uh, the TSO, there's not a trail intersection anywhere around here. Um, so that's why we didn't recommend that either because the intent of the TSO is whether that's the injunction or the intersection of a soft surface and a hard surface or two hard surface, whatnot. Um, so C one would probably be the most, if that's what you were considering, um, applicable, I guess. If you're looking for commercial uses.
Sherry?
So what would be the process to refer it back to planning commission? Um, and, and would, would we be referring it back or would we have?
Ultimately, all zoning decisions are yours. So if, if anything ever happens, it's gonna kind of have to come back to you. You, you just move to refer it back to the planning commission for a study related to a C one or just to study it further or at part of conduct a public hearing on a C one? I mean, you, you have quite a bit of, uh, leeway on that. You just by motion, state law says you have the authority to do it. So it would just go back and then, and then when it came back to you, uh, I'll need to think about the procedure a little bit, but, um, if they came back to you with a new proposal, we'll probably start over with first reading on that. Or if it was the same thing, maybe we could arrange a different way. I need to think about procedures on that, but that, that's my minor thing.
So would the, the filing fees if I refer it back or not?
No, no, no.
Oh, let me clarify, I'll make sure I understand what you just said. I, I thought that the council could just amend this to C one and go ahead and vote on it as C one.
You can?
Well, we work, we're back.
You know, I, I, uh, I have a lot of respect for the planning commission, but I don't think it's a contest to see how many hurdles you could throw in front of people. I think we should amend this. Personally, I think next week we should amend to C one and vote on it. But, you know, it's up to you guys.
The sending back would just be a chance to have a recommendation of the planning commission and staff, a new staff report. We would do a C one analysis from the top bottom, talk out of the planning commission, and then they refer it to you. So it'd be a whole new package basically for that specific zone. That would be the only hit of it.
Uh, Travis?
I, I agree, Mayor. I tried that last week, try it again next week maybe. But I, one question for you, sir. Are you interested at all in PCD or are you still out on that? Or PCD?
Um, I'm most interested in a C one because, uh, because I want to get further along in the, before spending, because basically I've already, we've already spent a fair amount of money on getting the, getting everything done that we've done thus far to figure out septic and, um, basically before spending so much more, um, and getting further along the development process, I would love to have the rezone, um, to be able to then, uh, determine the best use as far as like, because basically from the, like from today, from what I learned with the, um, septic, uh, there's, it, it can either have five hundred gallons of water running for the septic per day or seven hundred and fifty, and it's gonna change the size of, um, basically depending on what, how large the coffee shop, or sorry, the commercial development would be, um, and the number of employees. And in order to get further to that point, I then need to essentially hire a, an engineer to design everything. Um, so we're looking at significantly more cost before I'm able to get to that point. And so that's why I'm going for a C one rezone now and then we can further, um, basically do the due diligence, knowing that we're going to be able to, to have something that is approved. So I'm gonna do the approval process first and then begin spending money towards the, um, development of something that.
All right, well, let, let me try to help you out this way and maybe if, uh, council, would anyone be, would everyone vote for a PCD if he did that?
Yeah. I don't think it's a, we're really.
Okay, well, I think that's your best option. Okay, that's what I'm trying to say, so.
Correct.
Okay, I guess my question is, is it appropriate for us to advise applicants as to how they should develop their property?
You represent the public and it'll leave a wide range of comments that you can make. You know, I just refer you back to what I've told all of you before about what you consider when it comes to whether or not to rezone property. You can communicate that with the, and, and he, and it's the same, I mean, it's the same rules for you to determine and it's really what he needs to try to show you. And, um, so, uh, there are lines there, but I don't think we've crossed one, but, but it, um, people have the right to do what they want with their property under the law. And so obviously what we're dealing with here is what use can they make of it? And, um, you, you can't force a PCD on someone. I mean, no one's talking about forcing it on them, but it's a highly individualized, um, sort of a situation that's combines development with zoning. I think those are attractive, those, those have been attractive in Belvis because we want to know what they're gonna do. That, that's why. I mean, we have full residential developments that were PCDs and, uh, that's typically not the case, but at any event, um, it's, uh, you have a lot of leeway in what you have.
Okay, well, and I do have a couple more comments because, and I spoke with Jack about this and I just speak with the two neighbors that are on each side of the property. Um, and it's just like I said last week, is that, you know, my first consideration, do I want to live next to it? And I know that's not hard and vast, but, uh, that being said, for property owners to be in a situation where they're kind of getting thrust into a situation, when they bought their houses years, decades ago, whatever, that's their business. So that's my first consideration is how anything's going to affect the people that are already living, living within their zoning, what they, what they bought. Um, so I have a real struggle with that. Um, you know, the, if the neighbors could get on board with something like, uh, a, a rezone like this without a ton of, uh, concerns, I, I really would have no problem. Um, but you're talking real money and real investment for the people that are surrounding this proposal. And I'm gonna have my ear to the people who are gonna be impacted first.
That sounds great. That makes sense. And that's why I'm proposing to C one, which is designed to be transitional between higher intensity uses and residential. That's what it says in the zoning is that it's intended for that kind of exact situation. But I agree with your concerns and have spoken with the neighbors and I've told them both that I will continue to keep them updated on the process and I'll do everything I can to maintain their privacy and, and safety as well.
Thanks.
Larry?
Does the, does the newly adopted, uh, land use map that we have, zoning map that we have, show this area to be in transition for commercial?
Um, so the future land use plan, um, shows this as, it's in the outskirts of a type two village center. The new zoning map you guys have adopted that goes in effect December first, shows it as RE residential estate.
So, so the, uh, the land use plan does not show this to be a transitional area for commercial?
It shows it to be within a type two village center node. So, yeah, C one.
So you do show it as a transitional area?
We don't have transitional areas, no future land use land use nodes. So we have type ones, twos and threes. Uh, ones are our community, uh, needs are our smaller nodes, commercial nodes that serve those that live around it. Type two, which is what this one is within, is more of a village center, um, that kind of tracks the needs of those within the city and the those without, those adjacent. And then type three is our community destination, which is a regional draw, which that, um, that node is gonna be around Mercy Way, uh, seventy-one intersection. But, um, this is within the type two and so since it's on the outskirts of that node, um, would be overlay, the node that's been identified and adopted, that's what staff was saying earlier, is that C one does meet the intent of that type two building node. But we don't have transitional specifically, um, land uses within our land use plan.
Okay. I think everybody can study this, uh, from this way. Thank you for your time, Jack.
Thank you.
Appreciate, appreciate how you like work also.
Thanks.
Okay, next one, and we're in the new business now, is E ordinance amending section sixteen forty-one permit required in the code of ordinance, this city Belvis says to provide for more streamlined renewals of short-term rental permits. And I believe Taylor, is this in your area also?
While she comes up, I need to know one thing that, I think Mr. Hart brought, sees you up and I, I didn't note that correctly at the very bottom. It should have your name rather than the mayor's name on it. I'll fix that.
So, yeah, this was, um, initiated by a request of council member Hart, um, to basically, our code as written is missing a component that, um, clarifies for staff and the applicant, um, what the process is for renewals, renewal permits. Typically it's tradition with, uh, permit ordinances. If you're going to have an extension, renewal, um, or expiration, things like that, there's a specific provision that addresses that. Um, as written, it only has just for the initial permit issuance, which is generally permit issuance. And so we are following that as written by law. So any permit that is issued by a city, it is good for three hundred and sixty-five days as written in the ordinance given to us, and of course, um, council member Hart would like it clarified to say what the actual process should be for renewed, um, with the point that it should be renewed from the date of the original, um, issuance date. So that way they're not losing, uh, a time period within issuance. And so staff agrees, we said, well, I believe we support this. This will help staff with enforcement and administration and then hopefully elevate some confusion with the applicants as well. So we've just added a provision B for renewed permits that says if you get, if you're a renewal permit that's sixty days of the currently issued permit, then you get your extra three hundred and sixty-five days from the original date of issuance. So hopefully that clarifies it.
Well, I don't think you, quite, the, what it does is you've got sixty days from the expiration of your permit to renew it. And then your renewal is good for a full three hundred and sixty-five days from the original expiration date.
Correct.
So you don't lose any time. But you get a sixty-day period in which to get renewed so you don't fall out of line and that kind of thing.
That way you're not being punished for being proactive or renewing or, or not punished, but losing out of, uh.
It would seem intuitive that that would be the case. If you renew it and it expires on December first, if you renew it in August first or October first, then it would be intuitive that the renewal would be from December first of this year to December first of next year. That's what I'm saying, to say so.
I was just gonna say, I like this, that thinks council member Hart and city staff were looking on this.
Okay, I think everybody's probably clear on that. Thank you for that. Next one is a resolution accepting a grant from Walton Family Foundation and amending the budget to recognize said grant for a hundred and seventeen thousand, six hundred dollars, the twenty percent local required match for the seventy-one corridor plan and updating the trails in Greenway Plan.
But I think that's, that's an error and I'm gonna let Mr. Ross speak to that, but I, I, we're not updating the trails in Greenway Plan. That's some language that got left over from another thing, I think. Taylor, is that what we ended up?
Um, we are updating the plan with this grant.
Okay.
Yes.
That's right.
The grant, um, is the grant that we have, um, been awarded by Walton Family Foundation is the twenty percent match that the city was expected to pay for RDOT's grant that we got earlier. Um, that grant is to, for two projects. It's to conduct the seventy-one planning study for Belvis Way and then update our ten-year-old, uh, Greenway and Trail Master Plan. So I just wanted to make sure that was clear. We're not adopting a trails plan tonight. We are just accepting the grant to update in twenty twenty-six.
Oh.
See what I'm saying?
Oh, so this grant will, will provide the.
Funds.
Funds to prepare and update.
Correct.
The local, the local sheriff funds.
Okay, so we need to reword that just a little bit. So, um, we'll, we'll fix that so that it reads what we need.
And, and so the amendment is, uh, adding revenue to the twenty twenty-five budget of a hundred and seventeen thousand, six hundred.
Correct. So with how they operate with their grants, they basode you all months. Um, and so they're, they, um, we got it for this grant year and so, um, they were wanting to get it issued before the end of this month so that way you can get paid. Um, we need to amend the budget to accept it because it is a contract as well, um, for grant stipulations that we need to follow, uh, which is reporting requirements as typical of grants and, um, basically accept it to the mayor to sign the contract. And so it won't be used probably until twenty twenty-six, so it'll probably be, um, we'll vote to push that over, but just to accept it to make sure our budget's in good order and when the check comes, we need acceptance from you guys.
Larry?
So is this an RDOT project or is this a regional planning commission project?
This is a city project, but we did get, um.
It's a city project that's initiated.
Yeah, so we, the city, um, will be doing a project, two projects. And we, we got the blessing from you guys to apply to RDOT and Regional Planning Commission for the eighty percent of funds, which we got awarded. And so for the twenty percent funds, the Walton Family Foundation has said they'll cover that for the city. So that way these both, these two projects are a hundred percent funded. Be it right.
Thank you for working on that.
Should be exciting and busy year next year with these projects on.
Uh, and my dad, we're very fortunate, Walton Family Foundation, and several times has been very generous in giving the twenty percent of, because it's very common for grants to be eighty percent, and twenty percent can be a fair amount of money. And so they've been more than generous. Thank you. Next one is a resolution approving adopting a fee schedule for city developments, the planning and development related permits and applications.
Okay, this is my last thing tonight and I think I'm gonna go sit down after this one. But, um, this is the fee schedule that we discussed prior. Um, with the new code, we have new applications that were created that need fees set by you guys before the ordinance goes into effect, establishing those applications on December first. Um, for example, large-scale development application no longer exists come the end of November. It'll now be called new process called site claim review, um, and it needs a fee. And so with that, we also have new, uh, minor modification application that doesn't exist. We have minor plats that didn't exist before. We have separated our vacation, uh, easements, alleyways, driveways, things like that into their own processes and own applications. And with that said, they need fees. And so, um, we have tied in the project that we discussed with you during open discussion a couple months ago to let you know that we started looking at it. Um, our fees haven't been updated in, since twenty twenty-one was the last time we did like a full review of the localized fee schedule. And I do just want to clarify and just be transparent, this is only planning and development related, um, so like land use, land licenses, uh, development that is planning. It's not building permit fees. Like these are not gonna look at MVPs or your, your electrical permits, your HVAC permits, your building permits. None of that is included here. Um, that's all we're talking about. So with that said, um, we are reviewing, uh, zoning, things that require public hearings, things that are required then the city to pay for upfront such as legal ads. Um, there are several applications that, uh, staff has to pay an upfront fee and then to notify the public that the planning commission will talk about it and that. and then to notify the public that the planning commission will talk about it, and that if you guys adopted a rezon or a PZD or a vacation of public easement or alleyway or alley, then one has to notify the public again with another app that we have to pay for that you guys have done that. We have to, we have to pay notifying the weebista or a local circulated newspaper per state law. And so there's also other requirements that we found about beyond the city has to pay for, such as the signs, the wood signs that pop up whenever there's a public hearing, notifying the people to drive by it. All of that is paid for by the city. And then there's also, there's the expenses that were reviewed during this small study, such as staff time, how many staff touch it. Several staff members will touch a lot of these applications, and I can go through a few to give you an example. There are multiple bodies that will touch it. We are also paid by the city, just like you guys right now. You guys have an expense that comes from the city, the planning commission gets a site then to come to meetings, the VZA gets a site then to come to meetings. And so all of those, of staff review time, approval time, review time, is a city expense. The other expenses that were looked at were the required inspections, and so that meant more staff time and then gas. So very big picture review as to what we're expending on that. Fayetteville just went through a very detailed fee study, and so they're gonna be the most up-to-date when we are looking at the four studies that I provided you guys. They looked everything. They looked at like supplies, fees for permitting software, whatever, whatever you can imagine. They, they paid an outside consultant to come and look at every penny that the city was spending on applications. So there's, that's why the numbers are a little odd, like they're to the dollar, like one thousand eight hundred and one dollar, like it's very specific. That's why. They're doing an incremental approach to full cost recovery, I believe. I think they're starting with thirty percent of cost recovery, and then they're gonna slowly work their way over the next couple of years to one hundred percent recovery with their fees. So that's why it's so different. And then we have a comparison, of course, to make sure that we're not operating outside of the usual with the big five. And so you'll have the other three studies there as well. But you have the current, which has the logo in the background, it is huge. That is the current fee schedule. And then you have the proposed, which is a table. So that is why I'm proposing to update our existing ones to and our new application fees to, based on just a high-level view of what our expenses are. And it's not a full cost recovery, if I put my staff in them, it's a percentage. For example, the GEC, that is not a full cost recovery amount by any means. The GEC is, I think, let's see where I can make sure. So looking at the GEC, on average, looking at the intake person who touches it, the engineer technician who touches it, the store manager who inspects it, twelve to eighteen to twenty-four times. And then if the engineer has to get involved, they go out and inspect it, or if the street department has to go out and inspect it, because it's done something in the street, as well as the gas and average insurance taken, I'm only asking to recover about half. So this is not a full cost recovery by any means. It's just to help close the gap a little bit. Obviously, the expenses that are being subsidized right now, as I reviewed, are expenses, so. With that said, I'm happy to take any questions, or if you want me to go into detail, having staff members and board members review applications by any means.
Shay?
Hey Taylor, on the comparison chart for the Bellevista piece, is that the current or proposed?
Current.
Okay. At the risk of being lazy, could we add one more in where we see current and proposed next to the chart?
For sure.
Thank you. And then for the ones listed for Fayetteville that we're seeing, then that's a reflection of the process you just described, where they.
Yeah, they're overtime cost recovery. This is the first step.
Okay. And then I know you mentioned, you know, that they're going to scale it to a full cost recovery, and I know you mentioned some of the proposed fees you put in are like a fifty percent cost recovery. Is there like an average cost recovery that we could, that you kind of strategized around on these fee proposals?
The goal was at least a third, but I can give that to you for the regular meeting, before the regular meeting. But yeah, the goal in my mindset was thirty-three percent.
Thank you.
How, Larry?
You mentioned that other departments touched this, and so you looked at some cost impacts as a result of that. So will the fees collected then be distributed or shared with other departments if they touch this? You know, part, part.
I don't think that's even how our current fee intake works. So the fees that go, that we collect right now, I do not see a direct intake on my budget right now.
Yeah, they go in the general, whatever they do.
General fund?
Yeah.
All, all those, the general fund?
Yeah, they don't all come back to me, they don't all go back to the city, it just goes.
Okay, alright.
Having said that, when I'm looking at the budget, and I'm with this one example, and I see, man, this fire department sure is expensive. And then I notice they get over a million dollars of revenue for ambulance, well, there is some return there also. It's something to take into account when you're thinking about this. Travis?
Thanks, Mary. It's probably somewhere in the ordinance or an ordinance somewhere, but I don't know the answer. So I want to know, do realtors and churches that are having a barbecue have to pay the ten dollars for a sign?
If they put up a sign?
Yes.
If you put up a sign anywhere in the city, if it's not within our excluded section of signs, then yes, they'd have to get a permit. So I would have to check, but it depends on what they've been. There are certain things that we exclude from ordinance that say you don't need a permit to do that, but you need to follow these certain rules, like your political signs when you guys run for campaign. You don't need a permit from us, but you have like ten to twelve requirements that you have to follow.
We protect, churches in particular are protected, of course, but I hadn't, and we just adopted in our code new sign brands, so, but.
And we don't look at land use with our new code anymore, we use signs.
Which is important.
Yeah. We don't look at what the sign says, or what it's for with the new code. We're going.
The churches are protected, and I know.
Well, they have First Amendment protections, what we're talking about. So they do have to comply. I shouldn't, I'm, I'm making it more complicated than it should be, but I'm an attorney. So what I'm saying is, is that churches obviously have First Amendment protections. There are certain things that they do that others may have to get a permit for that they necessarily would not. Signs are regulated, even if they are a church. So I'm probably mixing messages for you, but.
I see. My, my problem with the ten dollars for a sign is it seems really complicated, who has to get a permit and who doesn't? And I can just see how somebody could be on the wrong end of that and get a fine for not having a permit. Or you've all been in the day with questions about getting this permit or a permit for this sign. So I don't, I, I would like an amendment for, put that off of there.
You want the temporary signs to be free?
We've got, this is just adopting fees, so you could, if you want to change the requirements for when you have to get a permit, that's gonna get into the ordinance. If we want to talk about how much you have to pay for that permit, that's what we're talking about now. Now, you can make a permit cost zero, but it would not alleviate the need for a permit.
So we have an option to change these fee schedules, because when we adopt an ordinance, you say, oh, we'll get to the, how much it costs.
You can. You, you can. What, what I, and what I'm saying is, you, you can set that fee right now. That's what you got. And you can set a fee to zero, but whether or not you have to get the permit, whether it costs you anything or not, is in the ordinance. And that's something that would have to be considered separately.
Okay, I understand. Thank you.
Uh, Larry?
I guess my question would be, St. Murders has sponsored the Senior Health Expo in the spring and fall. And so there's a sign out there, I don't know how many of them they put out. And then at the, uh, uh, Bellevista Lutheran Church down the street here, they sponsor the salt conference, and that's usually an annual thing, seniors and law enforcement together. It's a full bay conference, and they usually put on a flyer for that, a sign. Would those situations require a permit from you?
I, I, I'm gonna caution with we not dealing hypotheticals right now, because it may depend on the location of the sign, the size of the sign. It could depend on some things, and we don't want to make a commitment here without full preparation if somebody came in with a request. So I mean, generally, I mean, you might get an answer, not about those specific things, but things like that, or in general, I don't know if you want to jump in.
Well, yeah, I just, generally, just not get in a rabbit hole, because it feels like we're about to jump in one. It doesn't have to do with the fee schedule. But regarding to the fee schedule, the ordinance that we adopted on September twenty-second establishes permanent sign permits and temporary sign permits that need a fee established for them. So yeah, so if you're gonna erect a permanent sign, it's several different, there's a variety of types, you need a permit. If you're gonna do a temporary sign permit, yes, you need a permit depending on, again, the nature of, you know, the requirements that I know. So I don't, I don't want to get lost in the weeds on some of those fees, but yes, generally speaking, the ordinance that goes into effect for this fee schedule does have permanent and temporary sign permit requirements.
Shay?
Hey, on the chart, again, the bottom one is orange, was that intentional?
Yeah, that's for me. I was looking at dipping it between development zoning and licensing. So they've been, it's a licensing, it's a land use license, so that's just, that's just for me. There were a lot more colors to it, I was like.
Okay, I get all the hell, maybe folks who take a week and study it a little bit, and so we can do more things. So thank you for all our work, Taylor. Next one is a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a contract with CEI Engineering Associates Inc. for engineering services related to the place impound lot expansion. Chief Graves?
So just, just that, that says, we're, we're expanding our impound lot, which is located the northeast corner of the street department. And it's a matter of expanding, we own, the city owns the property, it's not a matter of moving out the back fence and just making it larger for us. And this is part of the process. And CEI was one of the engineering services that proposed or submitted RFQ with the city in twenty twenty-five. The city staff has determined then to be more appropriate or qualified to do this project for us. So that's what this is for, and the, the money has already been allocated in the police department's capital budget for twenty twenty-five.
Any questions? Travis?
What is the current capacity of the lot, and what is your goal for it to be?
So current capacity as far as what we can put in it. Now, we, we pack it pretty tight. It's not like a normal parking lot where you just have normal, normal spaces. Right now, the lot's, boy, I'd say maybe a, need a quarter of an acre, and I think we're gonna make it just, just, just about an acre. We're gonna push the back fence up, and I think because it, it, it grows in the size of almost an acre, we had to do what's called a large-scale development. And so that's, that's forced us to have to do a lot more engineering services, and that's, that's what we're doing at this point. So we're gonna try to take up most of the property that the city owns, because we just need it for future growth. That's where we put all of our vehicles that maybe are involved in accident, we have it for evidence, that we need to keep for long periods of time or evidence. We have that back there now, a trailer that was involved in homicide, and we have to keep that forever. So that's back there. That's where we put a lot of our less-so equipment, just our extra equipment, trailers and things we don't use on a daily basis, we have to store. And it's, it's at the rear of the special operations building, which is, houses my, my SWAT team and all of our equipment. So it's, it's a rather large area, we just need a capacity to have a secure lot to put these items. Right now, a lot of the stuff is strewn out across the street department property, and it's not secure. And so this is just gonna help clean things up and move things. And there's some unused space that the city owns, and so it'll clear up some of the space and allow us to use the property the city currently owns to fit a better capacity.
Uh, Larry?
How will that additional usage of the street department area affect, will it have an impact on the future needs for the street department growth?
Not, not the expansion of a lot, because it's behind, it's, it's property that's not even currently used. It's, it's, it's behind, I can always walk people out there and show them, but basically, it's to the rear of the existing lot, and it's just forest of land, it's landscaped land, there's nothing back there. So nobody currently uses it. The street department couldn't really get to access, get, go through our lot to get to it. And so it's property that I don't believe the street department can use in the future.
Because we, the street department owns, the street department, the, the city owns a chunk of land south of the police building, where the fence is there, all the way to the high lines.
Correct.
And that's a very good usable space. Unfortunately, it's separated by a ravine or a drainage, which, which keeps you from easily accessing it, but it is a good space.
Well, I think it's a space quite old, you know, we have cars, wrecked cars, and things that would be in high sort to the public. So I don't think that'd be a good space for this type of usage, if that's what you're asking me. I don't, where, where the lot currently is at, it's out of the view of the public, it's actually more secure, it's in the back of the property, and it's, it's currently where our existing lot is. And so we have an existing lot there, we're just asking to expand it. If you're asking to put a, another lot somewhere else, that really wouldn't be very efficient. But then, like you mentioned, the, the land really isn't flat enough for that in that area.
Uh, Shay?
So I can hope I noticed, so this is roughly two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars just to kind of flatten in and create the area, sorry?
I'm sorry, please.
Oh, I'm so sorry, okay. That, I was like, wow, that is a lot of money.
That's a lot of money.
This is around fifty-two thousand, and their capex budget for this year was a hundred thousand, he may have some other things in there, but.
Am I reading it off the?
It's H, yeah, sorry, I was, I was looking at my side of the line.
Yeah, that's a lot of money.
That makes me feel a lot better.
Well, the chief's thought fifty-two is a lot. Some of this engineering is surprising how much it can be, you know, there's drainage issues and everything that has to be much more.
My next question seemed to make, can we just buy a lot somewhere else for cheaper? That makes me feel better.
Okay, I think we're set. Thank you. Next one is a warding bid authorized in the contract GeoStabilizers, that is stabilization international, in the amount of two hundred twenty-five thousand, three hundred thirty-five dollars and eighty-two cents, plus an additional twenty percent project contingency, for a total amount of fifty-two hundred seventy thousand four oh two ninety-eight for open road slope stabilization repairs and amending the twenty twenty-five city budget appearing, huh? Oh, okay, and they're down into your already?
So as you guys are, should be aware, remember, we've been bringing this to you in phases, we're at final phase. We went through the entire bid selection process. We recommend GSI, GeoStabilization International. With that, also the budget adjustment, it's, it's a twofold thing here, because we're at the end of the year. And speaking with the finance director, this is how she suggested it goes. The budget adjustment for twenty twenty-five that's written into this is for sixty-three thousand dollars, engineering fees that have been spent to this point. GSI is, uh, indicated to us that they would like to mobilize the first part of January twenty twenty-six. So the remainder of that project cost is actually listed in our twenty twenty-six capital plan. And so for, for this bracket here, it's, it's warding bid and the sixty-three thousand adjustment for twenty twenty-five.
This is the project we were fearful of how much it would cost, and I believe it's significantly less than what the engineering, engineers estimate.
It actually came in over in the engineers estimate, which was a good thing. We were really worried it was gonna be so much higher, but still expensive, but it's better than what we were anticipating.
Uh, Shay?
I noticed in the details that it says the excavated earth will be moved to a city property site. Do you have the details on that?
It's a leased site area off Chelsea and Tudor Road. It's in a flood plain, it's been undeveloped. We, we use it, POA uses it kind of as a material storage site, where if at a later time we can reclaim those materials, we'll do so.
Wendy?
Thanks, John. I just wanted to thank you and Karen. I know how long we've been working on this, and it's been a big stress and pressure. I'm so excited that it's getting closer to being finished. And once they begin the work in, is January, how long will it all be down?
In your packet, we put in their schedule.
I thought it was something like six weeks.
Yeah, so, so in the bid, we allotted six weeks' time. Yeah, so, so in the bid, um, we allotted six weeks' time, just because of how I was looking, where it was gonna hit, early January, weather, what might not happen. But in conversations, they were more in the mind frame of four weeks. But if you looked at their schedule, they actually have it in 21 days. So, weather permitting.
Travis, uh, what could you explain the additional 20% for the contingency fee?
That's just a, a general thing we do with the types of projects we get into, because once you start breaking ground, you never fully know what may or may not come up. So it's just a what-if amount of money. Hopefully it doesn't have to be used at all.
Thank you.
Okay, I think that's it. Thanks for the presentation. The next one is item J, resolution approving amounts that please to be certified to the county tax collector against certain real properties as a result of grass cutting expenses and abatement of other nuisances by the city of Belo Vista. Chief Graves.
So, so this council property, uh, that's listed on Clacton Lane that was identified in 2025, it's not cutting their grass or weeds, basically, I believe, the land images. Uh, we, we tried to locate the property or get them in compliance, and that was never successful. And so we contracted services with a company to cut the grass or the weeds throughout the summer. And this is a matter of, uh, after that was done, we, we did the official service, tried to send a bill to the property owner, owner of record with no response. And so we worked with, with legal counsel, with Jason, to make sure we've done things the right way. City council, I haven't seen one of these in quite a while, but this is something that we've, should have been doing for quite some time now, but some words kind of built up the cracks. And so this is something I'll bring to you annually for properties that we have to spend money on to contract, to keep them within compliance with, with code violations, mostly things like unsightly or, or weeds are one of the big things we run across. And that we can't get people in compliance that will contract, will bring them in compliance, and at the end of the year, we will mail them if they don't pay it, and the processes that come in front of you and to ask the place to lean on the property for the monies that we have tried to recover, so that in the future they could be recovered if properties are sold.
So by law, we have to conduct a public hearing. And so the notices that we sent to the owner indicate that they're, they will have their public hearing next Monday night during our meeting. So when we get to this item, uh, mayor, you'll just ask for any uh, con, public comment during that for the public, open a public hearing, and probably disclose a public hearing, because I don't know that this person would show up, but they could, and any member of the public could, could speak on it. But we do have to have a public hearing, and that's why I've noted that on the agenda there, a public hearing to be conducted. Also, one thing I need to make sure we're clear on, the property that we cleaned up is five Clacton Lane, but the owner is at 13 Evans Lane, right? And so I think I may need to make some clarity on that, just to make sure we, we have that straight. But, uh, because I'm, I'm not sure I understood it that way, but, but looking at it again, I see what you're saying. So we'll, we'll make that minor modification. But the notices have gone out to the right person to write this.
Wendy.
Outside of the written notices, did we try to like phone call, knock on the door? I know they're a lovely person.
Yeah, we, we tried all, all ways of contacting people. Um, and then we, we go from, you know, the public record and who's, if we can't find somebody, obviously we go to the doors and we knock, we try calling, we try doing that like, like anything else we do in police work. But at the end, it'll be whoever's the registered public owner of that property that, that will then certify that too.
And?
Do we know if the property was owner occupied, or was it being rented out? Do we have that knowledge?
I don't have that information. I don't think it was occupied. But I don't have that information off the top of my head.
Well, the owner, I think, is at 13 Evans Lane, so I would say it's not owner occupied. Maybe.
It was on the left, that's correct.
So the, the amount is $305.04. And so what this ordinance, if you adopt this ordinance after the public hearing, then, uh, this notice gets sent to the tax collector, and uh, the tax collector is authorized to add this to the real type property tax bill that goes out next year. And so it becomes collectible that way. Um, and so that's why the language is in there about notification to the tax collector, because the bill can occur through the, uh, through the property tax bill.
So why do we need to certify that attorney?
I'm sorry?
Do we, we need to certify this to the?
You just need to, you, you adopt the ordinance like you would adopt any other ordinance, and then, um, if you.
Is there a timeline for that? Do they have to have it to get it on their tax bill?
Well, it'll go on the next available one, but, but we would sit and do it before the end of the year, and that should be sufficient for the next property tax bill next year. I can't speak for them. I don't know about their schedule, but, uh, the only other option would be a way another year. I mean, so getting it done as soon as possible would be, I mean, we, we know when we certify these things, it's been years since we've done it, and I, but we put that on the books, and, you know, we'll see that money someday. It's kind of one of those things. We, we're not, it takes a while.
What I'm shocked about is there's only one property involved. Typically, you see a list of 50 or 100 different properties that, uh, the community has to go in and either mow or shovel the walks, sidewalks, or do something, uh, to fulfill their obligation because they failed to do that. John, this is the only one that we've actually.
We have another one right now we're working on that'll be in 2026. Um, I can't really speak to, I just know when they come up on our radar, we'll go out and we'll do this. There may be more out there, but they just haven't come up on our radar. They may have some complaints we have to run across them.
I can provide, before these duties became part of the police department and the former planning department with.
Former paper.
We have our former employees and former staff. Um, I, I think that they were mowing and not bothering to get the liens.
The what?
They were not bothering to get the liens, because I think we were doing some cutting and mowing. It's been five, at least five years since I've seen this. We used to do it every year. And, uh, I don't, I can't explain how that changed or why. Of course, now with the police department, and, and they're starting to take care of that, but uh, I, I, it predates Taylor. I, I don't know, Taylor, do you know about what caused it to happen that way?
No, um, but from our records, I know we should find the help with the, the organization of the old lanes. Um, I couldn't find anywhere we actually mowed. Um, so I don't know if my predecessor was mowing and was just doing compliance.
I just know since I've been here, I've, I've come to every city council meeting since 2017. I don't remember this ever coming from any council, so it's been a long time since we've done this.
I think 2019.
I'm sorry?
I think 2019 was the last. I just cleared a lane, I think, in 2019.
Could I clarify? Uh, Jason, is this an ordinance or a resolution?
It's a resolution.
Oh, okay.
Mayor.
Yes?
Uh, I, I support this, chief, and Taylor. The only, uh, kind of hesitation I have is if the property they're living in is maintained well, that's kind of concerning to me. Um, so if, if, if they live in a separate property from where the troubled property is, or the, the property in, in non-compliance, if they're taking care of where they live, but not this one, that, that's my only hesitation with this. You see what I mean?
I don't, I guess I don't follow.
Okay. Well, if they live down the road and they're taking care of their house down the road, but they own this house and they're not taking care of this house, then, well, I, it just seems like there's a disconnect there to me. Now, that's my only hesitation.
Yeah, and I don't know why they would do that, but that appears to be what's going on. Honestly, I don't.
If there are any number of properties in the city that are not properly maintained for their lawn, and if it's not reported to code enforcement, code enforcement isn't aware of it, and they don't get involved, if they do get involved, then it reflects as an illustration of what the code requires for lawn care.
And in the code, it's, it's 10 inches, which is quite long. I mean, so you have to let your lawn grow for quite a while to be 10 inches.
Now that we've covered the resolutions, I thought I should revisit this. If people think it is, should be on the consent agenda. Uh, F is where we're simply adding $117,000 to the budget.
I think that should be on the consent agenda unless anyone disagrees.
Which one?
F.
I'm good with that on the consent agenda.
No, that's actually taken money and not spent.
Oh, receiving money?
Yeah. Anyway, I was trying to look at what else here. Uh, I don't know what you think about the CEI engineering for $52,000. People seem to think that was pretty, that Chief Graves spoke about.
When I learned it was about $200,000 less, and I thought it was all for it, so I'm good with that, I mean.
Well, the contract with CEI has a costly problem with it, so, I mean, we're just not doing a contract of good nature, goodwill. So there's a cost there.
Okay.
Those are the real ones.
I think people understand that it's a pretty big item, so I think we should leave it. So maybe F and A should be consent agenda? Is that it? All right, third one.
Good one.
Okay. Oh, I don't know about J. If you think that, well, there's gonna be hearing and everything that's, never mind. Can't do that. Okay. Uh, let's go to discussion items. The first one is the meeting schedule, and I don't know what people thought. There was only one thing that caused me a little hesitation. On December, most of these are the way we pretty much have done it every year. On December, we have December 14 and 21, which is the second and third Monday, which is moving it up. But the 21st is the same, it's Christmas week. So you could do the 7th and 14. If you really want to avoid Christmas, you might think, well, that seems kind of early. But this year, the second meeting is on the 15th. So I can see that anyway. I just didn't know how people felt. And if there's anything else you guys want to comment on, don't forget to.
Also, we're not here on Christmas.
Is there a reason for these proposed dates? I guess I, I assume there was a reason why they suggested the 14th and the 21st?
Uh, we are, we usually move it up during Christmas holiday. Otherwise, if you did second or the third, fourth Monday, it'd be the 21st and 28.
Okay.
Which you have to have your versions.
Wendy.
A couple of questions. So we know that we always have a special meeting in October for benefits and a special meeting in December for the budget. Can we just get those on the schedule now and give them solidified? We went to the special meeting, unless it's a reason why, or can we combine them into a regular meeting session?
Linda, how's your hand?
The October meeting is a little hard to schedule because until we go through the whole process of renewal and looking at all of our benefits, and say something really crashes next year with the benefits that we have, it may take longer to get a new plan in place that we can present to you. I kind of hate, I mean, we could do it, but there's a chance we would have to move it if we did that. That's all I would say about that.
Would we be able to combine that in a regular work session or regular state council meeting opposed to having a special meeting for that? Is that a possibility?
Depending on how the schedule falls, because again, we have to set up everything at the back end of our system for enrollments in order to be able to get it out as fast as we can for employees to compare it to their spouses or whatever else they want to compare it to. I mean, I hate to be difficult, but there's a lot of little moving parts.
That makes sense. The budget one feels pretty.
The budget one, we maybe have better potential trying to do it. Because we, last appearance, we did it in very early December.
If we could, I would love to.
We could take a look at that, think about it. Budget, I'm making a look at that. Budget, maybe before next week, we can, we'll put something out. Anything else on the made-in-schedule?
If we know, yeah, if we know updates that we won't be able to present, can we suggest those to Wanda for discussion, or how do you want us to, to communicate those?
You made the change of?
Yeah, make a change.
I don't know how people feel about that, but my past experience with groups of people is somebody can't make it a certain date, so you change it, and then somebody else can't make that date. So it seems like if somebody else is getting screwed on the deal, because they could have come when you were supposed to. So I'm a little red-eyed then. It, it's unfortunate, but that, as you know, that state law changes. I know somebody who had traveled about that. Larry?
Well, our, our schedule's really the, uh, the third and the fourth Mondays of the month. Routinely, uh, we have January and February are affected by MLK and President's Day on Mondays, and usually those are the third Mondays of the month, so it affects our, our work session by one day. But the rest of them, we've tried to adhere to our, uh, organizational schedule as much as possible with accommodation of some of the holidays where we can practically do it by the calendar. And that's really the calendar, how it falls. This year, as an example, we do it the first Monday and the second Monday, well, that clears you of Christmas, but it really puts pressure on all of the other groups, like the planning commission, anything that they have to refer gets messed up. Uh, so there's other places that get affected by changing our meeting schedule from a routine. And so as much as we can maintain that routine, even though it may not individually, even though it may individually affect us, we should do that, because that's for the public service, not for us, is my humble opinion.
So speaking of December, do people want to stick with 14th and 21st, or what's your feeling?
I don't know.
December 14th and 21st?
If we move to then, it'd be the 21st and the 28th.
Well, no, I was gonna move to the 7th and 14th.
It'd be before and after Christmas, it'd be one of the regular days. So that would have to, I don't think, and anyone would welcome that.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I think you're saying that you would, do they want to change to December 7?
And 14?
And 14.
I think they're, I'm agree that they're okay leaving it at this, or, or, or I just by reading.
Yeah, I mean, if, if they were, if they were there.
Yeah, they have a staff for, I mean, if they rather not be right by Christmas, then just decide in back staff. I mean, I heard Larry's point about there's other things, because there, there's some staff to consider too.
Okay. I'll just speak for the planning commission. Just for scheduling, if you did move it up, um, that would alleviate the, the time pressing between the planning commission and council. So if you moved it up to the first, or the 7th and the 14th, that would put your regular meeting on the 14th or the second Monday, which your meetings start at 6:00. Our meetings start at 4:30, so it would give us a small, like a, a bigger gap in between the two meetings, if you did move it up a week. Versus right now, uh, they'll be back-to-back, which is, which is fine. We got rid of that. We got here as soon as we cancel, not in your guys' way, but it would give us a little more time if you took that into consideration, the planning commission BCA. That's all I have to say.
I think we should have them move, or us go first, because we have to get out to them.
Long to the shape. Did you have a preference on it? You're also.
I have, no, I have no preference. I just know that historically, it's always been the 3rd and 4th, except for December. And the only legitimate December that I know of is what Taylor talked about. But personally, uh, for myself, no, I think it's important that the, the live schedule to the extent possible, because so many piece, there's a lot of moving parts, but.
Okay. I think we'll leave it at that, right? Okay? Thank you. Appreciate that. Uh, next one is 2026 proposed budget, and we don't normally actually talk about the whole budget, but we had a new budget, so I wanted to pass it out to you so you could see it. It, it changed a little bit. And one big thing that hasn't happened yet, we're still in open enrollment. So it's gonna be another week or so before we actually know what the medical is. And, and Glenda has pointed out to me, even we do know, I mean, things happen during the year. People get married or get divorced or have kids, or all kinds of things change in the plan during the year for various reasons. But, uh, we are kind of waiting to get those real medical numbers. But I wanted to show you what we had so far. And there were two or three things I wanted to mention. First one is, I think we had a little mix-up in the discussion the other day, that raises, uh, for all employees are 4%. So we decided to do this year 4%. And so everybody's getting 4%. Some people may be getting more for one reason or another. I have a new, a new page 7.1, which shows the head count, and actually that. I have a new page 7.1, which shows the head count and actually that was Glenda's idea. She said, past employees, we always showed head count. So, and I think that is worthwhile for people to see that, meaning the change in head count, the old head count to the head count. And the third one is, I included a page which was a list of additional pay possibilities for police and fire, just as a relative extent of thing. It's a big thing, so I want to make sure you guys understood how the compensation works so you could, if you make an export or get a 4% raise and then do some things to get other money aside from that. So, and they're pretty big departments, so there's always going to be somebody doing some of those upgrades. So, you know, you're conducting what, 70 people in fire and 50 some maybe in police stuff. I just wanted you to kind of get a form to understand, you know, how the whole thing looks. Wendy?
So the budget that was, the new draft still does not have any contingency plans if the bond does fail. If it fails, we will know tomorrow night if it does or not. When will we get a draft of the updated capital expenses and then those changes?
Yeah, that's a good question. If, well, if it did fail, we could start working on that right away and look at a bunch of different things and some of the things, you know, the things that are in the bond are, well, the rules of the bond are that you have to complete things in three years. And you can even not take all the money down at once if there's something that looks like it's going to take a long, long time. You know, you could have more than one takedown if you, if you need to stretch it out a little bit. So there certainly would be an effect on the 2026 budget, but some of these things in the normal course wouldn't have happened in 2026, right? I mean, it's, but definitely we'd have to sharpen our pencils and work fast, but I think people, well, speaking to the director of finance and myself, I think we have a pretty good idea about, of kind of things that wouldn't happen.
Have we not started working on it yet and we're waiting to see? Like wish us some prayers or do we, past events prepared is not finalized yet in just in case?
No, we gave that some thought ahead of time and we didn't want the department heads to spend a lot of time working on it. And I think in our own minds, there's a lot of things that are fairly obvious. I mean, voters both know this, like I've got a fire station number five, things like that. And some of the things even at headquarters, I think, will have to be delayed or even perhaps not occur. So there's a lot of different things like that, some of the equipment and whatnot, but like I say, a lot of the things weren't happening, wouldn't happen in 2026 and certainly wouldn't happen if this didn't pass, so. So I think we did, I'm confident we could achieve it very quickly. Larry?
Early voting was this last week, tomorrow's the big day, right?
Yes.
And we have four polling places in Villavista.
Yes.
So the polls will be open from 7 to 7, I'm assuming?
7:30, 7:30.
7:30, 7:30. So we questioned this, did we have any feedback about how many voted early?
You know, I didn't check on the early voting because I felt it was surely going to be relatively inconsequential because of the nature. Wendy?
Hello, I know that when I voted today earlier, we were 75 and I saw 88 was the number I saw towards the end of the day. Total.
So at your polling place, it was what, 75?
That's the only polling place.
Is that for that day or cumulative?
Total.
Oh, okay.
So we need to really get the folks out to vote tomorrow?
Yeah, yeah. I think the word has gotten around pretty well. Actually, the news media got to work around a little better than I, I thought they might and we spoke with a lot of groups, a lot of large groups and so I felt like the turnout would be respectable. Villavista as a way of turning out better than most cities, so, but we'll see. Travis?
I just had a discussion on that, if the council doesn't mind, before we adjourn, that's not on here.
Oh, yeah, I have, the next thing I had down was Wendy Hughes about the public safety committee.
Yeah, so back when I was here, I proposed bringing back the public committee that we had previously and in the light of the recent passing of the utility worker in Villavista, I wanted to make that actually happen. And so whatever steps I need to take to make that happen, if y'all are agreeable, I'd like to see that brought back up.
Well, yeah, I had the impression that council felt fairly positively about that, so I just wanted to get, Jason tells me all the statutory stuff is in place, I just wanted to get a feel from you folks tonight, if you're in favor of it, which I kind of suspect that people would be. I was going to get with Gassy and start the process tomorrow. We need to advertise it, give people some time and I thought in January, we could be ready and have, you know, a slate of people to look at.
That sounds fantastic.
Travis?
I just, whenever I ask if people were in favor earlier, I got chastised as in a thought work session, we could kind of gauge where people stood on issues.
Oh, I see what you mean.
But I support, I support, yes, probably.
All right.
I think it's about voting, like we can't poll on an actual piece of legislation, but we can, since this is our legislation.
Well, in a work session, you can talk about whatever you want, but you know, I mean, there's nothing improper. When you ask, would you want a BZB, you really didn't ask anything improper, but I don't think anybody would want to answer your question.
That makes sense.
It's not a wrong of the question, I don't know where it's going to be, but that's right.
I support it and yeah, I think, anyway, that we can possibly work to prevent what happened. This is definitely our responsibility as a city and I know it was like a really sad accident, but I think that establishing this committee and following through with it is a great thing to do in his honor.
Anna?
I agree and thank you for, I guess it was our police that put up the speed sign and the slow down sign right after exiting the highway out to Akishire, so things like that are great reminders for safe driving. So more of that.
Well, it was kind of a dovetailing of different events. Frosty Marion had been contacting us quite recently about putting the speed signs out and the animals, deer in particular getting in and we kind of asked him what locations, he was thinking about that kind of thing, so. It's, you know, Villavista's growing and my personal observation is there seems to be more people going fast and cross the center line on curvy roads. You have to really drive defensively to stay in one piece. I think it's fun and I was great getting the safety committee, I'm not sure what, it was a very unfortunate accident and I really appreciated how boring the community and how badly everybody felt about it. Not so sure the safety committee will help with that particular situation, but it's a great, it's a good idea to have and so, so we're going to get going on that right away. Travis?
I just wanted to talk about something that may be a little bit premature, but I wanted you all to know about it. I've been talking with some folks at the county judge's office and the Baton County Children and Advocacy Center. They're having severe funding issues due to the government shutdown, I think is part of the problem. I think the folks at the county, they did, they did a study and figured out how many residents of Villavista have used that service and so they're going to come to us and ask us for, I think, around $30,000. That would be our portion of funding, short follow, about $600,000, but I think Joseph Bolinger will talk to us next Monday about it in more detail.
Yeah, it's regarding the One Big Beautiful Bill passage, that's the funding shortfall, okay, right?
The county judge, Mooreing, Judge Mooreing sent a letter talking about the issue and the county had decided to give some money and he attached an attachment showing what percentages different cities had of the CAC. And Villavista wasn't on it, so I appreciated some of you folks following up and trying to find out. I thought what they most, some children of Villavista-
Still 5%, but 25%.
Yeah, so that's 25 out of 500 or so. Shane?
So we're sorry, I heard, I heard you say it was government shutdown, but then is it, was it a change in legislation or something? It's regarding the passage of the One Big Beautiful Bill. It cut funding, that funding, all states, because Microsoft does take a lot of that funding and then made it harder for our governor to then allocate funds appropriately as needed.
And the Children's Advocacy Center, advocacy center, it's largely for children who've been impacted by crimes, right?
That's central, so usually.
Okay.
They listed two different sources of funds that they had lost and it was significant money. I want to say there were $300,000 each, $600,000.
$600,000.
There's short money this year and there's 600 next year. Washington County's running 500 next year.
And I'm an advocate of this, this program. In my previous career, I, you know, I understand their impact, so I would personally support it if the funds are available somewhere.
Yeah. Jason, I want to confirm with you about-
Well, I wanted to, when I heard that the county was donating money, that hurt my ears because I'm not quite sure I even know the setup of the CAC, whether it's private nonprofit or if it's, it has a government-
Is it nonprofit, private?
Yeah. And so structuring, I don't know what the county did, but I mean, we need to structure something if we're going to fund them that's seen as an agreement in exchange for the services. I mean, we can't just make straight up donation and I don't know what the county did or if the county was concerned about that, but I'm concerned about it, but certainly there's a way to get that funding to them if that's what the city wants to do. We just need to do it the right way, it's going to take a little paperwork.
Yeah. I don't know if people on council, you don't obviously this through right away, cities aren't allowed to give money to charity and I think probably the reason for that is the rationale is, so you're taxing people to take the money from. So if you're giving to charity, people would say, well, if you're taking my money, give it to charity, why don't I decide what charity, you know, why are you taxing me? But so we, there's probably ways we could structure this, like you said, that it would be okay, but yeah, the judge didn't go into much detail about how he did that actually. Shay?
I just want to go on record and say that for all the elected officials far above us that had a role in defunding an organization that helps children who are victims of sex crimes, shame on you. And shame on you for burdening our county and our city governments for funding this in your place. Next year, we have a projected revenue budget of 26 million to take care of 36,000 people roughly and I think our budget's a little more constrained than the federal budget. So I just want personally, if any of our elected officials above us are listening, I'm incredibly disappointed.
Well, thank you for that. Is there, I think that's our last item. If everybody's done, I think we can adjourn. We'll see you next Monday at 6 o'clock. Thank you.